The Ho' chunk people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho' chunk land and the sacred lands of all indigenous peoples. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Excused.
Ms. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Como?
Here.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Here.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Excused.
Mr. Corburg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Here.
Thank you.
A quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the public hearing regarding Esser Three Funds of October 18th, 2021 is called to order. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Associate Superintendent Harcy will present the Esser Three Funds overview.
Hi, okay, I didn't know we were gonna jump right in, so let's do that. So thanks for this opportunity, appreciate it. We'll, I want to provide just a little bit of background, because if we're gonna talk about Esser Three, I think we need to do a little bit of Esser One and Two history, just quickly. So our COVID-19 relief funds, just in general, are reimbursable funds, and that's gonna be important here as I talk about some of these numbers. So they're for both public and private schools for allowable costs, and we have, you know, good guidance from the DPI on all the allowable costs for, were permitted to use these allocated dollars for. The funds are allocated to each district based on the number of low SES students, or to use DPI language, I'll quote them, low-income families residing in the school district. So when you look at, you know, the numbers for like Madison, or West Salem, or Onalaska, or La Crosse, you're gonna see different allocations. So in Esser One, we ended up with an allocation of 1.1 million, and this is not on our document, so I don't know if you wanna jot the, I see some people jotting this down. Esser One again, so you might know that as the CARES Act, was 1.1. Esser Two was 3.8 million, and Esser Three was 8.7 million. I say "was" like that was past tense, and it's not past tense, because the United States Department of Education hasn't even approved Wisconsin's Esser Three plan yet, so that's important to note. So for those of you who are keeping track, with Esser Three at 8.7, and if you jump to the end of our plan, you'll notice that we've got a total allotment of 11.6 allocated for this current stage of the plan. That's because, and this is an important piece, we've braided together different pots of the Esser Fund. So if you're like, you know, hey, look, 11 million is way over the eight that was allocated for Esser Three, it's because the Esser pots two and three are put together for our plan here. So before I go on, are there any questions about that part? It's kind of an important piece, otherwise it's like you're gonna be off for the rest of this, like you're way over here already. Okay. Next, I just want to point out, our plan is foundationally built off of our strategic plan for educational equity. We started with what is gonna do the most for our children in the school district of La Crosse. And so with that in mind, there are certain requirements that we had to meet with our Esser Three plan. Those are those first bullets there. First step was, we had to develop a safe return to in-person instruction plan. That is posted on our district website currently, and we have an obligation to review and revise that and share it with our stakeholders every six months, and that has to be done through September 30th of 2023. So that's gonna be an obligation, an ongoing obligation for our school district. Additionally, we have to, we're obligated to make sure that we're talking about our plan and obtaining feedback from stakeholders. There are some examples here, and we have some, actually some friends in the audience today we'll hear from later, but, and that's an ongoing process. There's other groups, for example, the Shumullen Homes, we had a session late last week after this was published. So we continue to look for desire, feedback from community groups to help hone and refine our plan. One of the obvious questions might be, it seems like you're kind of down the road with some of these items, and some of them we had to start. I will also tell you there is flexibility in some of these areas for us to continue to receive feedback and modify and adjust. I'll talk more about that in a bit. We do have an obligation to reserve 20% of the funding for impact with interruption to learning. I will tell you that we've done way more than 20% with our current plan. Additionally, we have something called ensure maintenance of equity of high-poverty schools. What that means is, we have to make sure that our per pupil spending and staffing, we can't reduce our spending and our staffing at our high-poverty schools at a greater rate than the other schools in the district, and then we're not doing that, obviously. Additionally, and finally, we need to ensure that our costs charged to Esser Three prepare for, respond to, and prevent COVID. So this next section, we just added something that's, you know, a couple of examples, and something that's obvious to the district, the school board, maybe not to the public, but with OE 10 and OE 11, I just put in a couple of examples of data to answer a few of these bullet points, something that I thought the board would be familiar with. There are lots of data examples to answer these questions, and I just put in a couple that I thought, okay, the board would be familiar with, kind of where our head was. One of the things that I want to point out is that the performance period for Esser Three goes backwards to March 13th of 2020. So when we talk about some of these data pieces that we're looking at, just know like it goes backwards and then forwards to September 30th of 2024 is when we have to utilize the funds by. I'm not gonna go through necessarily each of those bullet points, but just know when it says, for example, like, who are your most vulnerable students, you know, and what are their needs? That student climate survey, for example, hopefully that's familiar if you had a chance to click on that link. When we're talking about engagement and safety and belonging, that survey hopefully is very familiar to you, and it does speak to some of the areas that we were allocating funds. For example, speaks very plainly to the need for an EL coordinator, for example, but other areas as well. Similarly, with current needs of students and stakeholder input from various community organizations, you can see those there. The Huber Henshin Project, when we hear from families, redefining ready and some of the statistics before the pandemic. And again, I go back to that performance indicator back to March of 2020, and then in our instructional priorities and staff development plan associated with the strategic plan for educational equity. Now, what are we actually spending the funds on, or looking to spend the funds on? So the expenditures, again, are braided with Esser Two and Three, but we started with a district nurse. We actually started paying for an additional sixth nurse for the school district of La Crosse from Esser One funds. And so, but that nurse we're continuing to pay for a little bit out of Esser Two, and then again out of Esser Three. Early reading has been a focus, you might remember from Dr. Ingalls' administrative goals, early reading has been a focus there, our instructional priorities, and you can see that consistency carried through here. So includes resources and materials, includes professional development and diverse literature for bookrooms in our elementary. There is a focus of K3, not exclusive though to grades four and five, it's just we're putting a particular focus on our earliest learners. Student success coaches is where instructionally we're putting the bulk of our instructional funds, $3.5 million, for 22 positions, and I'll just briefly, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at that link, but what we're looking for is, there's no secret that the pandemic created a great interruption for learning. We're banking on our coaching for equity model, and we're looking for a variety of outcomes, of course, but we're implementing transformational instructional practices. These coaches are primarily came out of our classroom for the most part. There were a few success coaches, excuse me, that came from outside of the district, but primarily from inside the district. They're highly trained in social, emotional, behavior practices. They're teaming with classroom teachers, with grade-level teams, with building administrators, with district-level administrators, to work on some of these opportunity gaps that we know are very real. In some cases, they're providing direct instruction, they're addressing any barriers to learning, they're monitoring student progress, and this is one of those accountability measures we're monitoring very closely. An obvious question might be, well, these are grant dollars, what happens in two years? These 22 positions? Well, we're hoping this is a rounding, amazing success, and we have a compelling argument whereby the community is like, we can't let these positions go. Look what, how we've moved the needle, and we might be able to make a compelling argument to our community where they're saying, please, let's, let's figure out something to, to keep these positions in the form of, who knows, operating referendum, that'd be a board decision, that kind of thing. I would also submit that if, in a worst-case scenario, these are senior staff for the most part, and they'd be moving back into positions through, you know, attrition and those kinds of things, we wouldn't anticipate necessarily anybody losing a job, they'd just be moving into positions very organically and naturally. We also have, I mean, who knows, we've got a survey out there right now, and who knows what happened with long-range facility planning, which could naturally see some shifting of staff as well. This is a question that's on staff's mind, what's gonna happen in two years? We're asking them to work very hard right now on, for students, and coaching with teachers to do the very best they can for students, and, but I will tell you, this is in the back of their mind. Questions about that piece currently? Please.
So are you collecting or planning to collect data that will show the community the impact that it's having, or is it only going to appear in the data that we already see in the results reports?
Yeah, we're collecting data actually in five specific areas. So academic data, obviously, behavior data, because we both have, we have both academic and behavior success coaches. Attendance, we're looking at areas in social, emotional learning with a new screener, it's called Sabers, takes about three minutes, it's about 19 questions, and then we're also looking in special education area. We also are good, taking, getting data on coaching cycles, it's a little bit of a side piece, but yes, and we're hoping all of that will create a very compelling argument to keep the success coaches. Additionally, number four here, again, this is on the early reading and literacy theme, we're supporting teachers who want to obtain their 316 license, their reading license. I will say, though, that this opportunity is for district, for staff district-wide, at any level. We had quite an appetite from staff, so we ended up, we had an initial dollar amount, this is a example of the fluidity of some of these dollars, we had an initial dollar amount. Kelly Schmitz, our supervisor of educator readiness, she looks after PD for our district, came back and said, we need to increase this amount, we've got so many teachers who are excited and interested in this, and so we, we ended up shifting some dollars, increased that amount. Number five, we've got a contract with Social Responsibility Speaks, so several of you are familiar with Amanda Goodenough and Laura Abellera. They're doing basically throughout our district at every level, working with cultural humility, others, ongoing professional development, working with administrators, teachers, students, and that's a two-year contract, $30,000 per year. Cultural outreach and inreach is probably, we know what our intent is, we know that the pandemic has been particularly harsh, harsh on our historically marginalized communities. This is probably our most undefined area. I will say, meeting with different groups, community groups, there's been different feedback and input. For example, in meeting with lit leaders, they said, look, this pandemic has been really difficult on children's mental health, mental well-being, we would support any programming around mental health, even positions. I asked a clarifying question, do you mean, they said, even counseling positions, even... I would remind our board, on September 20th, board approved hiring of two more social workers in the district, Wolsey Pierre and Stacy Deal. Those positions were social workers that we're sharing the cost for with the county. So it's the first time we've had shared social work positions. We're hoping that it goes really well, and we have additional positions that are shared going forward. Cultural outreach and inreach, we just talked about, okay. Number seven, the 4K investment, we added 2.5 FTE, so we could offer all-day 4K at Northside and Hamilton, and we also added 0.5 FTE for an instructional coach. The mobile classroom has been probably what's been in the media the most. So we purchased an RV. Now, initially, that, that's been, gets your attention, right? And with that RV, we also staffed that RV, and I would tell you, the last numbers that I heard, about 11 students were, have been found for Head Start, and another four are enrolled in our programming for preschool. So there's 15 students who, you know, through this pandemic, we've literally removed the barrier of transportation, we've gone to them, and we've found them, and so we're hoping that number continues to increase, and it's certainly kind of fetching and eye-catching when you see that school district of La Crosse RV coming down the road and picking up children and helping them get an education. Questions about the mobile classroom? Okay, and we can circle back to any of these, of course. Number nine, be great graduate, Boys and Girls Club program supporting caseloads of students. The caseload is about 15 to 20 students per high school at this point, and, I mean, the graduation specialists really do it all, anything from, you know, potentially sitting in the classroom to helping students connect with services outside of the school that may help them with their pathway to graduation. And I know in this one, it says, we look at number, these numbers are a little off, so number nine really connects with number 13, so as we were adding those, we had a little editing problem. And number 10, the Cooley Region Virtual Academy, you know, we, we've made that our own school now, we needed to staff that school, and so I think our latest numbers, I think we're up over 120 students in that school, I don't know their specifics, but north of 120, so we hired three FTE there. Special education inclusion coaches, much like our student success coaches, but specific to our special education program. So they go through all the similar trainings, plus some specific trainings for, to support special education program. Our English language, our English learners coordinator, Olga Dedkova, was hired and is really helping make connections for students and families in the school district of La Crosse. High school completion pathways, so we've got a contract with Western Technical College. GED option two, we're, we're looking at for the school district of La Crosse, and essentially, I don't know if you're familiar with GED option two, but the state authorizes the board, many of you've probably heard of HSED and GED. We can, through application, in our alternative program, if we apply, we can offer that in-house instead of, you know, going through outside, a lot of districts go through, you know, their local, like for us, Western, for GED and HSED. Number 14, professional development, you know, we had a lot of staff with the student success coaches that we pulled out of the classroom, which means there's a lot of new staff that went into those spots. Plus, we delayed, we didn't necessarily intend to pack on what's called iReady and EduClimber, these are two, one is for data and another one is for assessment. We ended up packing those on each, on top of each other, which wasn't our intention, COVID kind of created the situation. Point is, there's a lot of professional development, and we had to put in some additional funds to make that, all that happen. And then for all the early literacy work, we have Melissa Ender is our content area coordinator for English Language Arts up through fifth grade, we needed her services additionally through the summer. We, you know, with a lot of these, for example, that one, we budgeted $10,000, and actual costs were, I think, like three in that case, or something to that effect. And then finally... And then finally, you know, one of the appropriate costs is around safety and indoor air quality. And so indoor air quality and HVAC upgrades for both of our high schools is one of our costs here. And so we put five million aside for those upgrades to make sure that our air exchanges are appropriate for students. So between S R two and S R three, our anticipated instructional and those indoor air quality costs will be eleven point six million dollars. And so that's where we are currently. I'll just repeat that the United States Department of Education has not approved Wisconsin's S R three plan yet. And because these funds are reimbursable, we're, we're paying for some of these items right now. Obviously, we have student success coaches. We have the mobile classroom. We have, now, some of these haven't started, others have. And so we're waiting, we're hoping, waiting, anticipating that those approvals will be coming through yet this month is the goal. I will say that the cupboards are not bare in other areas. So for example, while there's plenty of social emotional learning and that kind of thing here, we do have, and I'll remind you, like Project Aware, for example. That's a two point five million dollar grant specifically around social emotional learning work. Dr. Tracy Caravella kind of coordinates that effort, and it's in our school. We do have summer work that's taking place with the Good Fight Club, for example. And some of that was supported as well. And so there's lots of additional efforts that aren't part of necessarily S R three, but we're trying to make sure that we're hitting on a lot of different areas to make sure that our students' needs are being met. I've been talking a lot, I apologize. I'll pause, wait for questions.
Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question about the, the GED program. So that five hundred and ten, was it five hundred and ten thousand? Five hundred and ten thousand, that's to create our own GED, HSED program in-house. And I'm, I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. Number thirteen.
Thirteen. Thank you for saying the number. Okay, okay, so that, the high school completion pathways, that includes, it could be GED two, it could be, a variety of things includes leases that we have. So, so currently, we've got a lease for our alternative education program to lease space. You know, so there's a variety of things that are under that particular.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted clarification, because it sounded like we were creating our own GED, HSED program. And I was gonna ask why that would be the case if we have Western that kind of does it for free already, but.
We, we may be able to do this, this GED option two. You may remember Regina Siegel. This is something we've been exploring with our high school principals from when, I remember when Regina was here. So we've been looking at it for quite some time, and we haven't launched it yet. Doesn't mean it won't happen. It just means we, it's been under investigation for quite a while. This may be the opportune time, sometimes cycling it back through. It finds just the right footing, and maybe it will be. Large costs with all those, hopefully, we'll have some innovative programming. Again, the goal is to make sure that we're doing all we can for our students to help them reach graduation.
And the, the programs with Western are not free, unfortunately. Relatively expensive sometimes. So there's an opportunity to potentially provide the same service in-house. The advantage I have typically seen of a GED option two program over a technical college-based program is they can seamlessly transition between classes that they already have at the high school. There's less segregation of students as a result. And so maybe they are still passionate about band or choir, or they want to take a tech ed class, or they really love the AP history class. They can still take some of those courses and also be working on the GED components where it makes sense for them. There are some students who just, you know, right now, being in a traditional school setting is not working. And so then something like Western can be very beneficial to provide a different atmosphere to be successful. But I don't know, Kurt, you probably know the numbers on cost.
Yes. Yeah, right now, our annual cost for Western is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think, for the HSED program. And so, yeah, this would be, this, you know, could, could potentially, you know, bringing that in-house, lower that. We've also talked with Western about the concept two, where we do more of a blended model, or offer multiple pathways, they're open to that as well, and kind of rethinking graduation pathways. And they've brought forward some good ideas for students to be able to finish those programs with college credits too. So we're exploring all that. Final thing I'd add that is kind of fits with an innovative programming. We did expand the Lacrosse Roads program at Central to include a nine-ten pathway as well. So both high schools now have a nine-twelve Lacrosse Roads pathway for students right within their school.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you for that clarification.
Sorry?
Oh, I'm okay.
Other questions? I was just curious, Dr. Harcy, about the student success coaches. Was there a specific licensure, do you know, that was required for those positions? Because they are academic behavioral, I didn't know if they were elementary focused. Were they special education focused, were they guidance focused?
Well, all of them have a teaching degree, but we've asked, for example, we have a preferred thirteen, sixteen reading license, teacher license with all those. And so we've actually asked them, for example, we want them to either have it or enroll in program within six months. Again, looking for that educator who can help with literacy.
Yes, please.
So I noticed on the DPI website that mental health initiatives are covered, or could be included in funding for this. But none of these, like directly, like would encapsulate like a mental health, you know, service or initiative. Is there like a reason why we didn't go that route with these funds? You mentioned previously in your comments about the social emotional learning and the Project Aware grant. Is that kind of why we didn't go that route with this funding?
Yeah, I mean, all of those have an element. And then I would also say, like, our student success coach training have mental health components, trauma-informed care, the DPI's SEL training. I mean, all of those twenty-two positions have, so the, all the additional training that they brought with them, plus we're training them currently with all these other aspects. So it's certainly, the cupboards certainly aren't bare when it comes to those, you know, aspects. We're super mindful of that need.
I would just add, I think as we look at our supports for mental health, you know, kind of universal with our social emotional learning, and then as you tier that up with counselors that we bring in from Mayo, the social workers that we're hiring in partnership with the county, the existing resources we have, we feel like we've got a lot in place. And we're still building those out to their full capacity. And so I think it was serendipity that because of these other efforts, we didn't need to use these funds on that particular strategy, because we've got so much going on there already.
Other questions? Hearing no other questions from the board. Is there anyone present who would like to address the S R three funds overview from the audience? I believe we have four people who have signed up to speak. I believe our first speaker is Amber West. So if you could come up, and you'll be asked to give your name and the school district in which you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record. And then the speaker's remarks shall be limited to five minutes, and I'll ask the superintendent to keep time. So just give us one second to get the timer going.
Good to go.
We're good. Please go ahead.
My name is Amber West. I reside in the Lacrosse School District. As you all know, I'm a youth organizer for Leaders Igniting Transformation, also known as Lit. I am here with students today to ask that the school board does allocate more funding towards mental health, student, mental health and students' wellbeing. When asking students for feedback after my meeting with Dr. Harcy, a common answer is still attention to their mental health. Guidance counselors, guidance counselors are usually over capacity. Many of them are only meant to discuss academics with students. Student success coaches are only talking to students with academic or behavioral issues. And so students have little to no staff attending to their mental health concerns or needs. The district says that their plan is to push the needle for students academically and socially, emotionally. However, students aren't seeing those direct actions in front of them. And unfortunately, three hundred thousand dollars of a mobile classroom for fifteen students really won't be reaching the majority of the student body, nor improving their mental health. If the district wants to see improved academics and behavior from students, they should direct dollars in the budget towards improving mental health even more. According to research from the National Association of School Psychologists, research demonstrates that students who receive social, emotional, and mental and behavioral health support achieve better academically and socially. The school, climate, and classroom. The presence of school counselors has been proven to foster a sense of belonging in young people and a better relationship between school students and staff. Again, I ask that the school board equitably allocates budget, oh, I'm sorry. Equitably, oh, I don't know why I'm struggling so much today. I ask that the school board allocates money towards students' mental health. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Carter Mandell. I hope I pronounced that correctly. And again, you will have five minutes.
My name is Carter Mandell, and I reside in the Lacrosse School District. As I've said, my name is Carter Mandell, and I am the Logan High School Fellow for Leaders Igniting Transformation. I am also a sophomore in the Lacrosse District School System. I am writing to ask that you invest in more mental health counselors being present in the school district to assist with the mental health crisis within our schools. Mental health is a crisis that Lacrosse School District students have faced for many years. We have faced this crisis without help from trained professionals. It has been shown that school is an integral place for development, academic and emotional. This emotional development is shown through the identities and passions students find. The more pressing point is how this development can become negatively influenced. Students are introduced to bullying, peer pressure, and toxic environments, all without any proper means to cope with these problems. Students need school staff that are trained in properly supporting mental health. And some of these staff need to also share identities with the students because of Lacrosse School District's lack of LGBTQ plus and staff of color that work directly with these at-risk students. I've had many times where I have been introduced to these problems and the school district had no legitimate resources to turn to. Students deserve professionally trained assistance and support. COVID has left students at a disadvantage for proper mental health, and I am one of those students. After the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one school year, I was severely depressed and at a low point. Coming back to school was a positive and negative experience. The pressure already put on grades and student success without proper guidance left me even more depressed. But then I had friends that helped with my mental health by being there to talk to and not treating me like a number in a book. My mental health shouldn't be the responsibility of other students. The student body is not responsible for the mental health of their fellow classmates. And the student body is not responsible for our mental health in response to the negative school environments. The school district needs to take ownership of the twisted definition of student success and start restoring the emotional states of their students. Students deserve mental health services. This can be supplied by divesting from the student success coaches. These coaches haven't been truly helping the students, and the present of them, the presence of them continues to create a toxic environment surrounding the promotion of grades over mental health. These coaches are not therapists. Training and behavior is different than being a psychologist or a therapist. We need to have trained professionals that can help our students. And they need to stop enforcing the stressful environment that our students are already subject to on a daily basis. It is the school district's responsibility to provide a safe space for all students. This can be achieved through divesting from student success coaches and investing in mental health professionals to be in the schools. To invest in helping our students emotionally is the most useful path to take. We can also achieve this by redefining student success. If student success includes sacrificing the student's mental state, then it is a failure instead of an achievement. We can't replace actual mental health therapists and psychologists with student success coaches. The students haven't been affected by the present resources, which is why we must invest in these mental health services. Create a safe space in the physical and mental world of your students. Again, I ask that you invest more money into students' mental health. Let your students actually succeed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ally Schlicht.
My name is Ally Schlicht, and I reside in the School District of Lacrosse. Good evening, school board members. I am a junior at Central High School, as well as a fellow with Leaders Igniting Transformation. I am here to ask you to allocate money from the school district's S R funding towards mental health support for students. Mental health has always been an issue in schools, but following the start of COVID nineteen, mental health struggles have increased nationwide among adolescents. According to the National Alliance on Mental Health, one in six US youth aged six through seventeen experience a mental health disorder each year. This means a substantial population of our district is experiencing mental health disorders. Not only that, but general mental health has declined following the pandemic. The Kaiser Family Foundation states that shortly after the pandemic began, more than twenty-five percent of high school students reported worsened emotional and cognitive health. A more recent survey of high school students found that only one-third felt they were able to cope with their sources of stress, which includes strained mental health and peer relationships. Even before the pandemic, seven percent of high school students had depression and thirteen percent had anxiety. I urge you to acknowledge mental health in schools and the coronavirus's role in contributing to it. You have the unique opportunity to address these mental health concerns with the S R funding dedicated specifically to relieve the impacts of COVID nineteen. I grew up in a household with a Chinese parent and a Caucasian parent. In Chinese culture, people are raised with the mentality of pushing through anything and keeping their problems to themselves. The people here with me today can testify that I struggle to know my limits, which leads me to make myself take on more than I should be able to handle. During the pandemic, I took on more than ever as travel time was suddenly cut from my schedule. I started my own club, played varsity tennis, actively participated on the debate team, and more, all while trying to stay on top of my schooling. After returning to in-person school, I kept pushing myself and have not stopped, thinking I can always push through anything. I'm learning how unsustainable this mentality is and often feel like I am steps away from a burnout. Fortunately, I have my parents who support me and talk with me about my struggles, but not all students have that privilege. Having mental health professionals in schools will provide significant support for not only people who don't have access to a trusted adult outside of school, but also students like me, who may just need someone to check in and tell us when it's okay to breathe and take care of ourselves. At Central High School, there are only four counselors for the entire student body of over one thousand students. They address scheduling concerns, proctor testing, help students with planning for their futures, and much more. It's unrealistic to ask any more of them. We need more licensed mental health professionals in the schools to help students specifically in the field of mental health. Again, I am asking you to please allocate money towards funding mental health services in schools. We need licensed professionals who have gone to school specifically to address student mental health. Mental health is a serious concern for students, and investing in mental health is investing in the wellbeing of students. Currently, none of the S R budget is being allocated directly towards student mental health. Addressing test scores and statistics should not be the basis of which a successfully, successful recovery from this pandemic is judged upon. You should be supporting students in a way that gives them the ability to function in their best and healthiest state. I urge you to take mental health seriously and invest in the best way of supporting our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ella, and I am not going to try to pronounce the last name. So if you could please teach me how to say your last name, I would appreciate it.
My name is Ella Lissney, and I reside in the School District of Lacrosse.
Thank you.
I am a senior at Central High School and an officer with our student senate. And I'm here today to ask that you allocate funds to promote and preserve student mental health. Mental health has been a large topic for students throughout the last year, especially after dealing with virtual learning and the pandemic. However, even though students are back in the building, many of the same issues exist. For example, For example, last week, I asked a room full of freshmen if they knew where Student Services was located, and I was met with an overwhelming amount of shaking heads. Many students don't know where to go if they experience hate against them or are dealing with a mental health crisis during the school day. Other students of different grade levels in our school have expressed to me that they feel there is little support available to them. Many of our counselors are stretched thin dealing with schedules and college admissions that they are unable to provide the amount of support that students at our school need. Of quote that stuck with me from the past week, "Part-time positions do not work because students don't have mental health crises just half of the time." I'm asking you to place a larger emphasis on supporting students in the building and by hiring outside staff members as support for students in, and investing in mental health education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who would like to address the S R three funds overview? Hearing no further requests from the public? Is there a motion to close the public hearing regarding the S R three funds?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So I want to go back, Dr. Harcy, to, uh, when you were going, I, I am, we're still in discussion, right?
We can go, yes, absolutely.
Um, so regarding the concerns that the students express about mental health, help me understand, are the student success coaches supposed to be providing mental health services to students?
No, I mean, we still have, they, they've got some training in around SEL. It's in trauma-informed care, but it's still a referral to counselors. I mean, those are the folks who are actually trained. We've got school psychs, school counselors, school social workers. Those are the folks who are actually trained in those areas.
Okay. All right, thanks for helping to clear that up.
And thank you, uh, Dr. Brustle. I probably should have asked, are there any further questions from the board before I moved on to a motion to adjourn? Okay.
I do have a question, but I'm gonna ask it later after I figure out how I want to phrase it.
Sure.
So.
That sounds fine. So then I will take a motion to close the public hearing regarding the S R three funds. Is there a motion to that regard?
Second.
Great. Moved by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Mr. Spivey to close the public hearing regarding the S R three funds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? The motion has carried and we will close the public hearing for S R three funds. And we will move into the public hearing for, uh, the public budget hearing, pardon me. So, uh, I believe the quorum of the board is present. So, uh, we will call the public budget hearing of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. And, uh, we will move into, uh, the presentation by the Executive Director for Business Services, Patty Sprang, who will present the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two operating budget.
If folks came for comment on S R three and don't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, they're welcome to go about their day and thank you so much for, for coming and speaking.
Thank you all.
So, so we have gone over the proposed budget plan starting September twentieth. The, the board took action on the proposed plan October fourth. We published the budget in the newspaper October third. The budget hearing is today, October eighteenth. So tonight's budget hearing is based on a preliminary budget approved by the board. As shown in the attached twenty twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget plan document, schools are limited as to how much revenue can be attained through the two sources of state aid and local taxes. The revenue limit minus state aid equals your local taxes. The revenue limit makes up approximately eighty percent of the operating budget. Although the twenty-one, twenty-three state biennial budget provided a slight increase to state general equalization aid funding statewide, it did not increase the revenue limit per member adjustment for either twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, or the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal years. This means that there will be no increase to the district's revenue limit authority on a per pupil basis. At this time, we are anticipating a state aid increase of one point six percent, or five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for, for, from the prior year's state aid allocation. However, an increase in state aid does not increase our ability to spend, but it does lower the local tax impact. The proposed tax levy shows an estimated increase of seven point nine-three percent, or close to three point eight million from last year. This increase is attributed to a strategic planning of debt repayment that does not impact taxpayers. Based on current estimates, this levy will not increase the gross levy rate from last year's amount of nine dollars and ninety-eight cents per one thousand of assessed value, or nine hundred eighty-eight dollars for a hundred thousand of pop, of property value. The levy credits that flow through the municipalities will further decrease the impact of the school levy and result in the net levy rate, but those dollars are not known until December. Currently, the proposed budget is posted on the district's website. When all numbers related to revenue limit, enrollment, property values, vouchers, and other exemptions are known and calculated, the budget plan document will be updated in time for the levy to be set on October twenty-fifth. Are there any questions from the audience?
Any questions from the board first? Hearing no questions from the board, is there anybody present who would like to address the budget? Hearing no requests from the public? Is there a motion to close the public budget hearing?
Make a motion to close the budget hearing regarding the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two School District of La Crosse operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Como, seconded by Mr. Corburg to close the public budget hearing regarding the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two School District of La Crosse operating budget. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried and we will, uh, close that hearing. And we will now move on to our Board of Education meeting. So a quorum of the board is present. So I will go ahead and start the, uh, meeting of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the board. With a motion by Ms. Como and a second by Mr. Corburg, we will approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Is there a motion to amend the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried. Uh, public speakers, do we have any public speakers? Is Amanda here? So Amanda's not here, so then we will move on, uh, through our budget, or pardon me, through our agenda, uh, onto the approval of the superintendent's consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. With a motion by Ms. Como and a second by Mr. Corburg, the items on the superintendent's consent agenda are approved as presented unless there is objection. Is there any objection from the board members? Hearing none, we will, uh, approve those and move on to the board consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, board consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
With a motion by Ms. Como and a second by Mr. Corburg, the items on the board consent agenda are approved as presented unless there is objection. Is there any objection from the board members? Hearing none, then we will consider the board consent agenda approved. And we will move on to announcements and I'll turn it over to Ms. Como.
Uh, we had a meeting on October sixth that talked about, um, services with Holman and Yola policies, and we actually got into quite the debate on approving a vehicle purchase plan, which then resulted in having yet another meeting on the thirteenth to be able to get that done because there is a timing in regards to ordering their vehicles. So, um, it was very interesting two weeks learning about purchase programs and vehicle leases and rentals and owning and mileage. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Is that just for Holman?
No, this is for CISA four, so that's for CISA four itself.
All right. Uh, we will move on to the announcements by, uh, Ms. Malman from the La Crosse Public Education Foundation.
I have no new ones, but I'll repeat one more time that the Gold Star Grant's deadline is October twenty-fifth.
Sounds good. Uh, do, do we have an interim director for the La Crosse Public Education Foundation at this time?
I don't believe anything has been released.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Um, I have no, uh, announcements as the president, so I'll turn it over to Superintendent Engel.
Um, just one announcement on facility planning. A survey went out to staff and parents via, or family members via email, um, last week and this week. And a survey should be arriving in boxes today. So it's, it will be exciting. We've already received a few phone calls and emails, some, you know, thankful for the information and some with different opinions. And, uh, looking forward to getting, uh, robust feedback from our communities so that we can make the best possible decisions, uh, with that information moving forward. So the, it'll close November eighteenth-ish. And then we'll have those results presented to us, uh, by the survey company in December, early December. So give us, uh, plenty of time to digest that and make some decisions. I think we're already up to twelve hundred surveys returned electronically, so families and staff members. Those are internal audiences, so you take that with a grain of salt. You're always interested in what the, uh, individual in the community who does not have children and who is not an employee thinks about things, because that's a pretty big barometer for, for success on, on these sorts of things. But exciting, uh, please encourage folks to fill it out. Uh, we have translated surveys for Spanish and Mung, and we have people available to talk through the survey as well if reading in those languages is a challenge. So, uh, excited to get some feedback soon.
Got a question for you.
Yes.
I haven't looked at social media in a while, but are you all doing social media push for the survey and stuff too?
Yes, we will be, absolutely.
It hasn't happened yet, right?
I don't believe it's happened yet.
Okay.
No. Yeah, we wanted to make sure they showed up first and then we'll direct them to the things. It would be a shame to say, look for it on the eighteenth and then the mail gets delayed in St. Paul today. So yes, it is forthcoming. Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, we will move on to agenda planning.
Make a motion to approve the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one budget approval levy certification and November first, twenty twenty-one Board of Education agendas with any additions or corrections.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, moved by Ms. Como and seconded by Mr. Corburg to approve the October twenty-five, twenty twenty-one budget approvals levy certification and November first, twenty twenty-one Board of Education agendas with any additions or corrections. Any discussions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried. Do we want to do a board debriefing, Dr. Cooper Sol?
Well, Dr. Jimenez, I was going to share that, you know, the two of you, uh, the two of us, excuse me, talked last time about the challenges of debriefing during, um, very brief board meetings. I literally have nothing to debrief this evening because we have no information items or action items. It's an agenda, so I'll turn it back to you.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. And so at this point, we will adjourn to our board workshop, so meeting is adjourned.